Good evening and welcome to the November 9, 2015 special session of the Gaithersburg Mayor and City Council. First item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask former Mayor Sidney Katz to read the pledge, please. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidney.
Did you skip the motion?
Okay. We need, it's my understanding, we need a motion to conduct the special session this evening. What is the pleasure of the council?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries four zeros. Thank you. Next, we have the certification of election results, and someone from the Board of Supervisors of Elections, Barbara Fady, is going to come read them for us.
Mayor Ashman and members of the City Council, the Board of Supervisors of Elections held a general election on November 3, 2015, for one two-year term of mayor and three four-year terms for the Gaithersburg City Council. As you know, the city used AccuVote optical scanner voting equipment for this election, and the board was extremely pleased with how it worked. Results were double-checked. First, the ballot report tape was removed from each scanner and added manually. Second, the memory cards were consolidated and run through tabulation software. Additionally, the board determined that 21 of the 48 provisional ballots cast on Tuesday, November 3, were valid and should be included in the vote total. The board certified and counted these ballots. Therefore, the official election results are slightly different than the unofficial results released November 3, 2015. A total of 3,704 valid ballots were cast. The Board of Supervisors of Elections has certified Judd Ashman as being elected as mayor for a two-year term. In addition, the Board of Supervisors of Elections has certified Ryan Spiegel, Robert T. Wu, and Neil H. Harris as being elected to the City Council for four-year terms. Finally, the board would like to thank all of the staff and our election judges for conducting a very thorough and efficient election. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Let's give Barbara a round of applause. I know we all thank the Board of Supervisors of Elections, our staff who was involved in running the election and did a fabulous job, and Lynn and Lauren Klingler were headed it up, and our, and join Barbara in our thanks to our volunteer election judges. They did a wonderful job. We had a terrific day. Now, tonight, we're going to take the Oaths of Office, and as we bring Robert up here to the dais, we're also going to say goodbye to Kathy here at the dais, and I wanted to give Kathy a moment to, or more than a moment, however long she'd like to take.
Three minutes.
To give whatever remarks she'd like to Kathy.
Thank you. Obviously, I don't want to be here too long talking, and it's really hard to even think about what to say at a moment like this, so really, I'm just going to do kind of the Academy Award mention names kind of thing. I hope to talk to people individually over the next few weeks, and I hope I don't leave anybody out, but if I did, please don't take it personally. First, obviously, I need to thank my husband, Bob, and my daughter, Jean, for allowing me to have the time to serve you. I did, like, tell at least one person that I was going to run for office before I told my husband, for which he's forgiven me thankfully, but they've been very tolerant, and it will be nice to have much more time to spend with them. I really want to thank Judd for encouraging me to run, for being a friend throughout, for being a campaign partner, and always ready to discuss issues. I would like to thank Henry, who's, I'll mention, is not here tonight because his wife had surgery today, and Mike, and Ryan, for being great colleagues to work with. It was nice to have people with a variety of viewpoints, talk to people, to listen to what they had to say, listen to what I had to say. And I'd like to thank Neil for stepping up. It's not always a job for which you get a lot of appreciation, and it's certainly, you know, hard, I think, to serve in a one-year slot, and I think he's done a great job and will be a great addition to the council. Beyond the council, first, I'd like to thank Sidney Katz and Sally. I certainly knew Sidney for a long time, talked to him in his store about city issues. Certainly, you know, never told me to stop caring or thinking about the city, and it's always nice, Sally's always been a great to have, I don't know, another woman who's involved in all this stuff to talk to. Really, our city staff is great. I can't list all 200 and however many people there are, but I'd like to thank City Manager Tony and Deputy City Manager Dennis, Doris Stokes and Michelle Coupe, Lynn and Frank, Tom Lonergan and Chief Soroka. Those are the staff who I've worked with most often, most closely, and they've all done a great job serving the city, supporting us as the mayor and council, and working for everyone in the city. I'd like to thank the staff that I worked with on committees, Diane Beck, Andy Rosati, Monica Marquina, Dan Lane, Ali Mumpar, and Pat Petula, who is no longer working for the city, but I'm sure remembered by many. I'd also like to thank the city staff who I worked with before I was elected, and really, these people made a big difference in that they helped me see that the city was a good thing to spend time with. These people did their jobs reasonably. If I disagreed with them, they at least listened, and really, I think, working with the staff members contributed a lot to my choice to become more involved with the city. I'll remind staff members that every citizen you work with is somebody who might become a volunteer, might even run for elected office, and these people helped set me on that path. Probably the first employee I ever met was Mark Coburn from Public Works, but also Sergeant Rudy Wagner and Scott Scarf, and Elena Ingram from the Police Department, Cindy Hines, who's now in City Manager's Office, and Trudy Schwartz from Planning. But I've had the longest relationships with those people and really appreciate them. And I also just want to give a quick shout-out to some of the organizations that work with the city. Nonprofits, obviously, can do things we don't and complement the work that the city does very well, and so I would just like to recognize Gaithersburg Health for all they do for people in the city, the Muddy Branch Alliance and Senna Creek Partners for their watershed work, and the Gaithersburg German Town Chamber of Commerce for working with the city in so many ways to promote business in the city and in our area. That's all.
Thank you, Kathy. Let's give Kathy a round of applause. I just want to, I'll say a few words, and if anybody else would like to jump in about Kathy, then we can get on to the oaths, but I've been a candidate for office, this last Tuesday was my fourth time. The other three times, or three of the four times, Kathy has either been running with me or sort of been supporting me and by my side. One of the things I'll miss personally about not running for office with Kathy anymore is walking, is going door-to-door and having Kathy identify all of the plants, but not just, not just saying, you know, "These are black-eyed Susans" or whatever, but telling me the Latin names. It's pure Drizgula. It's really, it's such a joy. I, I'm going to say more next week, and I hope everyone will join us next week for a reception we're having upstairs at 6:00 PM next Monday to honor Kathy's service, but I'll just say that Kathy is, has been such a fine example of what I believe we should all strive to be: brilliant and humble, dedicated and open to new ideas, and she has made an important mark on the city, and I'm going to stop because I have to take an oath, and I'm about to break up here, so who would like to be next? Who would like to say anything?
I'll be quick, which is unusual for me, but I just, I'll incorporate by reference the extensive comments I already made at Kathy's last regular meeting a few weeks ago, so I won't go through all of that again, but I do want to say I really meant what I said those couple of weeks ago, and I was thinking, as we were all standing and applauding for Kathy, you know, one of the amazing things about her is that she's not outwardly a very emotional person, for those who know her. She's tough, but inside, she's always driven by the right values when she is mired in the details of policy and reading several hundred-page reports and doing all the things that all of us try to do but don't always get around to because she's much more thorough than any of us. You know, she's, she's doing all of the stuff that's the, that's the work of the council, but behind it all, you're being driven by the right values, and so I just want to salute you for not only all the things people always say about you, being detail-oriented and all of that, but also the motivation that you have for all the things that you've done over the last eight years and before. So, thanks again. It's been an absolute pleasure to serve with you. We don't always agree, but many times we do, and we certainly have great debates, and that's really the best thing you can ask for in a council colleague. And I just want to say, even though I know this is so long, I know it's not farewell, at least for a little while, and we expect to see you and talk to you many times over the coming months before you make any major changes in your life.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Sure, I'll go next. I'm going to keep it very short because I'm going to make some more remarks at Drizgula Palooza next week. I had to work on being able to say that quickly enough, so anyway, Kathy, not only have you been an outstanding colleague over the last year, and you've taught me a lot, you know, I live over in the Kentlands, and I've, I've really had to come up to speed on the issues that face other parts of the city, and you've been really one of the strong go-to people on, on those issues. I've gotten to know the city much, much better, thanks to your tutelage and insistence on sharing the different perspectives that are so important when you have a whole city to take care of and not just one neighborhood. Your support throughout this campaign, talking me off the ledge from time to time, and giving advice and mentorship throughout this process that I had never been through before was really, you know, I can't even tell you how much I appreciate it. And I know you're planning to move to the West Coast, but hopefully, you're not going to have an unlisted number because I'm going to keep bothering you, so.
My husband wants to keep the same number.
Even easier. So, thank you for everything. You've done an amazing job here at the City Council, and I know everyone appreciates it, but I'll tell you that, you know, from my experience of coming up to speed in the last year, I couldn't have done it without you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I missed the, your last meeting, so I apologize for that. I was.
You were working.
I was working for, on the day job, so, and actually, you know, I'm from the government, and I'm here to help, so that's what I was doing on that day. I just want to thank you, Kathy, for your friendship and for being such a special colleague. And there's, there's not much more to say that hasn't already been said, so I'm not going to bother saying all that, surprise, but I'll just end by saying, I'll just end by saying congratulations and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right. So, what's going to happen now is I'm going to invite Barbara Michael John, the Cork of the Circuit Court, to join me at the podium, and Kathy and I walk down. Kathy will take a seat, and I will take an oath. All right. I'd like to invite my wife to join us here.
I'll ask you to raise your right hand. I'll say aye, you'll say aye, say your name, and then continue your feeding after me.
Sure.
Aye.
Aye, Judd Ashman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you so much. Okay. More things to sign, just in case, just in case. We need a paper trail. All right.
Okay.
Here you go, yours, and this is your pen.
All right, I'll just sign this.
Okay. All right. So, now, I would like to invite Ryan Spiegel to join me up here. If anyone would like to stand with Ryan.
I do.
Whichever side you prefer. I've got to have my right hand free, guys. Come stand right in front of me. You want to stand or sit? Yeah? Okay. Doris, you've got the things to sign, right? Oh, we're signing this. Okay, gotcha.
I'll take you off, okay?
Okay, raise your right hand, please. So, same instructions. I'm going to say aye, you'll say aye, and state your name. Aye.
Aye, Ryan Spiegel.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Well done. Congratulations. Now, you need to sign. Want to watch? All right. All right. It is now official. I'd like to invite Neil Harris. And anyone who would like to.
If anyone would like to join me, Michelle. Otherwise, she wouldn't have if I hadn't said that, so. Thank you.
Okay. Same instructions. I will say aye, and you say aye, and state your name. Aye.
Aye, Neil H. Harris.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Well done. Congratulations. Now, you need to sign. Want to watch? All right. All right. It is now official. I'd like to invite Neil Harris. And anyone who would like to.
If anyone would like to join me, Michelle. Otherwise, she wouldn't have if I hadn't said that, so. Thank you.
Okay. Same instructions. I will say aye, and you say aye, and state your name. Aye.
Aye, Neil H. Harris.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Well done. Congratulations. Now, you need to sign. Want to watch? All right. All right. It is now official. I'd like to invite Neil Harris. And anyone who would like to.
If anyone would like to join me, Michelle. Otherwise, she wouldn't have if I hadn't said that, so. Thank you.
Okay. Same instructions. I will say aye, and you say aye, and state your name. Aye.
Aye, Neil H. Harris.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support.
And support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's it. Robert Wu, please join me, and anyone who would like to stand with you. Okay, Robert. Perfect. Okay. So, I will say aye, and you say aye, and state your name. Aye.
Aye, Robert Wu.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Well done. Congratulations. Now, you need to sign. Want to watch? All right. All right. It is now official. I'd like to invite Neil Harris. And anyone who would like to.
If anyone would like to join me, Michelle. Otherwise, she wouldn't have if I hadn't said that, so. Thank you.
Okay. Same instructions. I will say aye, and you say aye, and state your name. Aye.
Aye, Neil H. Harris.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support.
And support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council Member for the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations. It is now official. So, now, you have a place at the dais. Please join us at the dais. All right. So, Robert is the new guy. He had to wait all this time. I'll let you go first, if you'd like to make a statement, or if not, it's totally optional.
Well, there, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's the first time I don't have a three-minute limit on me, and I'm not going to take the time. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council members for your sage wisdom in leading up to this election, as well as Councilmember Marafa, who's not here tonight. I had the pleasure of working with each of you, figuring out how to do a campaign, and ultimately resulted in me getting here. I would like to thank my wife, Jamie, my son, Julian, my mother, Jean, who are here tonight. I'd like to thank the residents of Gaithersburg, and I'm sure you'll find out a lot about what I have to say as we go forward, but I'm going to keep it brief because I'd like to get down to the Board of Education tonight to support some of our residents who are testifying before the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Robert. Would you like to say something, Mike?
I just want to congratulate everybody here on the dais, Ryan, Neil, and welcome, Robert.
All right, so, Robert is the new guy. He had to wait all this time. I'll let you go first, if you'd like to make a statement, or if not, it's totally optional.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's the first time I don't have a three-minute limit on me, and I'm not going to take the time. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council members for your sage wisdom in leading up to this election, as well as Councilmember Marafa, who's not here tonight. I had the pleasure of working with each of you, figuring out how to do a campaign, and ultimately resulted in me getting here. I would like to thank my wife, Jamie, my son, Julian, my mother, Jean, who are here tonight. I'd like to thank the residents of Gaithersburg. And I'm sure you'll find out a lot about what I have to say as we go forward, but I'm going to keep it brief because I'd like to get down to the Board of Education tonight to support some of our residents who are testifying before the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Robert. Would you like to say something, Mike?
I just want to congratulate everybody here on the dais, Ryan, Neil, and welcome, Robert. Looking forward to working with my continuing colleagues and inviting our new colleague as well. I know that you have a lot of things that you want to get done on your plate, and we're here to help make that happen. You just have to convince us that you've got the right ideas, so. I want to congratulate Loriann Sales for putting herself out there in a good campaign. She ran a good campaign, and while you didn't accomplish, Loriann, what you said about to do, I expect you'll continue to be active and contribute to Gaithersburg and the quality of life we have here. So, I don't think we're done hearing from Lori. And then finally, I want to, I'm especially proud to be sitting here next to Judd. Ten years ago, we started this, and I got ahead, I got ahead start with, on you, two years, but I think you've caught up. And so, I'm just glad to have the opportunity to continue to serve with you, and I'm looking forward to, we've already seen your leadership displayed, and your certain dedication to the community. There's a lot of us here that started ten years ago on this. So, it's good to see most of us here. And let's go, let's get it started.
Let's do it. Thank you, Mike. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, let me again thank my family. It's gotten noticeably quieter in the room since my parents had arrived home, but it was nice to have them here with us this evening. And I want to thank all my friends, and neighbors, and volunteers, and campaign donors, and other supporters, who came out and rallied this campaign season. The mayor mentioned, you know, this was the fourth time he'd run for office, he knows what it's like to run multiple times, and to rally volunteers over and over again is not an easy thing, but to see folks come out to support you and support your ideas is really humbling and inspiring, and I very much appreciate all the folks who contributed in whatever way, whether it was time, effort, helping to door knock, just promoting the campaign on social media, whatever. That really means a lot to me, and so thank you very much for that. Of course, I want to thank the voters for placing their faith in me for another term. I'm honored and again humbled by that. It's not something I take lightly, and as I took the oath tonight, I was reminded again how serious and important this job is to our community, and I will work hard every day to try to be worthy of the trust that you all have placed in me. I also wanted to thank all of the election judges, the Board of Supervisors of Elections, all the folks who were involved, the staff who were involved in making the election run so smoothly and so well. It really was a great example of the kind of efficiency, smoothness, positive experience that we try to promote and celebrate in Gaithersburg in a lot of different ways, but particularly with our election, so thank you all for that. And finally, I also want to add to those comments to thank the other candidates who ran for office this year. It is not an easy thing to do to put yourself out there, whether it was Darlene, or Henry, or Loriann. One of the things that I think marks Gaithersburg and sort of sets us apart from other jurisdictions in the region, and really in the country, is something we've said over and over again on the campaign trail this year. It's the civil and professional and positive environment in which we all tried to run our campaigns, and work together and be courteous with each other. I mean, it was a festive atmosphere at the polls, for those of you who were there volunteering, because we were all friendly with each other, and we were all getting along, and that's a reflection of the culture we try to promote in Gaithersburg. And I'm really, really proud of that. I'm really proud of that. It doesn't always happen, but it seems to happen a lot lately, and I think it's really a mark of distinction that our city holds, and I hope it's a tradition that will continue. I certainly will work hard to make it continue on my end, if I can. And then, I did want to congratulate all of the other folks who were victorious. Rob, I welcome you. It's been great to get to know you over the last several months, and I'm looking forward to working together with you. And you have a wonderful family, and you are obviously a smart guy who does his homework, so it's going to be really a pleasure working with you. Judd, it's been absolutely a pleasure working with you for eight years, and we're going to do it for at least another two, maybe longer. I'm glad that I don't have to run again in two years, I can tell you that. And then, of course, Neil, it's been really great getting to know you over the last year. I was a little disappointed, the only nice thing you could say about me in your email after you won your election was, "I really appreciate the snarky notes from Ryan and council members sitting next to each other." I'll try to make my notes a little less snarky. But no, all joking aside, you know, you've been a wonderful addition to the council, and I'm looking forward to working together for another several years. And I think we're going to do a lot of great things. We've done a lot of great things already. We're going to do a lot of great things in the next several years, because we do have other challenges ahead of us. And now, it's back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Neil?
All right, and Ryan, in my thank you note on Facebook, I did say some other nice things about you. But after you did that, I'm not going to say anything.
Oh, come on.
So, look, thank you all very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to do this. There are many, many people who, without whom I couldn't possibly be up here, and I couldn't possibly get this job done. I did post a very long Academy Award-level thank you speech on Facebook, so, and I thank probably half the people in this room, if not three-quarters, so I'm not going to repeat much of that. I just really appreciate the confidence, and will try to live up to it as best I can. I do want to single out a few people, though, that need to be, need to be mentioned at a time like this. First of all, Sidney and Sally Katz. You've been awesome throughout the time I've known you. I'm sure you've all heard in the room that we're part of a little coffee group that meets at the Kentland Starbucks over the last 10 or 12 years. I wouldn't, I would not have stepped up to do this if I hadn't been assured multiple times that it's not an ugly political atmosphere, and that the city staff is so awesome that, you know, we just have to, a light hand on the tiller, and the city staff does all the heavy lifting, which is great. Makes us all look good. And for the, for those of you up here, for Kathy, who is supposed to be sitting over there, but has departed from us, I already talked about how awesome it's been working with you. Judd, working with you throughout this campaign has just been a tremendous experience. You know, I've gotten to know you as a council member, and you as the mayor, but watching how you, how you conducted yourself on the campaign trail, and the way the people in the city react to you is just fantastic.
Thank you.
Mike, also, your support throughout the campaign is really appreciated, and, you know, we've gotten to know each other over the years, not just talking about rock and roll, but, you know, some actual policy issues and things like that, and I really appreciate everything. Ryan, I've already said what I need to say about your snarky notes. And Rob, you've really, you know, I got to know you during the campaign, and I didn't really know, you never know what to expect during a campaign, but I really felt more and better and better about you as a candidate and you as a potential colleague on the council throughout this. I really appreciate all your help and support in the many conversations we had, and probably the many that we're going to have over the next few weeks and years to come. So, I just want to say a few things about, about the process and going forward. You never know what to expect in an election. I certainly had no idea what to expect, unlike most of these folks. I've never done this sort of thing before. The biggest surprise, I think, was the fact that pretty much all the candidates agreed on what the issues were. There wasn't a big argument. We know what the city is facing. We've got redevelopment challenges and, and other challenges. And the fact that it was as cordial and cooperative as it was throughout the campaign really was a pleasure, and hopefully any future campaigns will be like that. You know, the big things that I see we need going forward, you know, we have great schools, but I think in the future, we don't want our kids having to have bunk desks in their classrooms, so we need to figure out what to do to get the people that have the purse strings and make those decisions to help us there. We like being number one in quality of schools, but we don't like being number one in traffic congestion on the roads. We need to do something about that. Those are decisions that we can't make here, but we will be strong voices and strong influencers to make sure that things get better as we go forward. We had the State Secretary of Commerce come to speak to one of our meetings earlier this year, and he said that Gaithersburg is widely known as an island of practicality, which is kind of an interesting thing, but of course, you know, no man is an island, and no city is an island, and so we need to work as we, as we do with our colleagues at the state level, and the county level, and anybody else that can help us out, because there are a lot of things that, where we need to work together, and I'll continue to work on those issues, as I'm sure all of our colleagues up here are. So, anyway, I'm very glad that the campaign is over, and we'll get back to work, and the goal is to make Gaithersburg an even greater place to be, and thank you very much.
So, we knew the day would come, when the dust is settled and the yard signs are mostly picked up.
Mostly.
Mostly. You put a lot of your life to the side in order to be an effective candidate. There's less time with the family. Your day job focus is interrupted constantly. Your car is messy and nicked up from all the campaign materials that are in it, and frankly, so is your brain. But we do this because it's, it's such a privilege to serve our residents in the greater Gaithersburg community. It's absolutely worth the time and effort. Last week was a resounding victory for the priorities that frankly we all laid out on the table, and for the balanced approach that I brought to the table. I'm really gratified and overwhelmed frankly by the trust and support of our residents, and I will work every day to live up to it. Before I get too far ahead of myself, I want to, I want to salute my colleague who's not here today for very good reasons, Henry Marafa. Going into, going into the campaign, I knew I'd have to work hard, and I did, because Henry is a good man who has served Gaithersburg with great dedication for more than two decades. I want to thank him for giving the voters the most viable alternative they've had in a mayoral election in who knows how long. It made me a better candidate, and it will make me a better mayor, and I appreciate Henry and his supporters for all they put into it. One of the, one of the most pleasant aspects of the campaign was getting to know Darlene Belzucarelli. Darlene, hey Darlene, she's way in the back, if you want to see her. I'd already been impressed with her dedication in coming to all of our meetings, because Lord knows, not all of our meetings are the most exciting business in the world, but I didn't really know her, and, and I've come to know Darlene as someone who truly cares about her community, who has a reasonable approach, a positive constructive attitude, and an admirable spirit of humility. I truly look forward to Darlene's deepening public involvement in the coming years. Loriann Sales ran a heck of a campaign. She had a heck of a campaign team. I understand what it's like to run and fall short, as I was in that position 10 years ago, as Mike, Mike brought up, not that I fell short 10 years ago, but that we practiced 10 years ago. Back then, I came back from it stronger than ever, and I'm sure Loriann will do the same. She and her family are credit to our city, and I look forward to seeing them stay involved. I welcome Rob Wu, who ran a remarkable campaign, really did a great job, and I expect he'll be a fine addition to our city council. And I, I'm so happy for, to welcome back my friends and swear them in tonight, it's a real honor. Neil Harrison, Ryan Spiegel, who've always been a pleasure to work with, valuable contributors to the public discourse at all times. And not to belabor all the remarks this evening, but I'm as excited as ever to work with this, with our new city council, to get great things done for Gaithersburg. What may or may not make sense to people who haven't run for elective office before is that while politics might seem like such a collective, social endeavor with parades and parties and dinners, there's a real loneliness to being a candidate, because ultimately, it's only you on that debate stage, it's only your name on that ballot. So that's why it means so much to us when people sign up to help, and I've been immeasurably lucky over the years to have the most loyal, wonderful, awesome, throw the whole thesaurus at this, with great words at this group of friends and family and volunteers. And there's too many potential thank yous to, to go through all of them in one evening, but I got to go through a few, starting with thanking my family, including my wife, my kids, my sisters-in-law, my two sets of parents, my cousins, and more. My supporters, Stacy and David Simon, particularly Stacy Simon, who was awesome, Tom McQuiggan, Mark and Janice O'Connor, the Cimenteris family, the Drizgula family, the Chiswell family, the Malone family. I see the Sobles back there, it's great to see them. Dan Reader, Mary Phallic, Danny Winborn, and others. Elected officials, particularly the great Sidney A. Katz and his wife Sally, Mike Sesma, Neil Harris, Kathy Drizgula, Cheryl Kagan, Andrew Platt. Delighted to have Congressman Delaney, Delaney on board. All of my colleagues up here for the inspiration, the good cheer and jokes when necessary. Believe me, a joke, a well-placed joke during campaign makes all the difference in the world. And so, thanks to all of you, and more thanks to be given privately. On a regular basis, our city staff, from Tony all the way down the organizational chart, make it such a pleasure to serve this city. It's, it's wonderful to be able to work with them for at least another couple of years. And I would just say, last year, when I was first appointed to the mayor position, I made a commitment that we will continue to be a government that listens to and considers ideas from all sources, that we should be open to new and innovative ways of thinking about and doing things, that we should always be on the lookout, ways to work smarter and to do better, and it goes along with my core belief that leadership begins with listening. And that commitment stands, so does my open invitation. If you have an idea, if you have a concern, or you just want to share something that's going on, I want to hear it. I'll take your calls, I'll respond to your emails, I will meet with you. I want to work together with you to do great things in Gaithersburg. The greatest city in the world deserves the greatest commitment from its mayor, and that's what I, that's what you'll have with me. I remain particularly, you know, I'm wrapping this up, don't worry. I remain particularly excited about Gaithersburg for four reasons. We have such a beautiful, diverse, creative community. We have a great team, council and staff. We know the mission, which is to enlarge people's lives through thoughtful, creative, and responsible service, and we know the challenges. While some are difficult and will take time to work out, I absolutely believe that challenges bring opportunity, and we can do fantastic teams, fantastic things with those working together. So, my friends, it's time to bring it all to life and shape our city's destiny. Let's do it. Thank you very much. Now, do we, before we adjourn, do we have anything from, from staff?
No.
Nope? Okay. So, coming up this week, we will be testifying before the Board of Education on Thursday on the Capitol Budget. All who want to support our school communities should join us there that evening before 7:00 PM. Next week, November 16th, reception here, as I mentioned, 6:00 PM, to honor the service of Kathy Drizgula, followed by the next regular meeting of the mayor and city council. So, until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.[1781.04]